Mr. Bautka.
Here.
Mr. Vashada.
Here.
Mrs. Bruno Ricculli.
Here.
Sayet.
Here.
Mrs. DePinto.
Here.
Mrs. Esposito.
Here.
Mr. McEnroe.
I am present.
Mrs. Crapp.
Here.
And Mrs. Beck.
Here. Dr. O'Connell, do you have a presentation today?
Yes, Mrs. Brady, would you come on and please have your group come up with you? Unfortunately, I apologize that it's not on the agenda, but I'm sure Mrs. Brady will do it justice, and I want to thank all these gentlemen for doing an absolutely tremendous job in helping out and putting some beautiful benches all around the SUES. And I know Ms. Brady will, and Mr. Agulhas, will do the honors. You got cake in there?
I believe so.
This poor guy hasn't eaten, that's back by you, he can use something to eat, he's been sitting here for three hours. That's not bad, Mr. Agulhas.
The SUES has...
Samson.
The Samson.
Is it on anybody?
Samson. Thank you, son. Hello. The Samson Upper Elementary School has two... has two beautification days each year. It's where we spend time to teach the children that it's very important to give back to the community. One of the beautification days was in the fall, and at that time, Mr. Dan Pavelik, who has a daughter in... volunteered to make four benches. And those four benches were placed on the perimeter of our playground, so that when all of the children came out to play, if some decided that they would prefer to read instead, they would have the opportunity to sit on a bench and read. He taught the children in the fourth grade how to mix cement in proper proportions, dig the depth for the benches, and make sure they were level. So this was something that you can't... the education you can't get from a textbook, and he did it. He came back again in the spring, and he did four more benches, so now we have eight benches. In between the fall and the spring beautification, Andrew Potenski, who is the son of one of the teachers in our preschool, Alice Potenski, had an Eagle Scout project that he needed a job to complete. So he asked us if there was anything that we needed, we said, "Of course, there is," and he, along with, once again, the help from Mr. Pavelik, made an additional eight benches. Andrew's eight benches are not put at the perimeter of the playground, but they're put in a rectangle shape, so that the children could learn how to converse with each other. The amount of work that went into these... there was a tremendous amount of work, because the benches were constructed in Mr. Pavelik's home out of Trex and the hardware that, you know, won't rust and is very sturdy, so that we put a safe product out there for the children. And not only that, but then he did it again, ate again, with the help of the Boy Scouts, and I'm sure he acted as a teacher to teach you and all the rest of the Scouts, you know, how to make the benches. We thank you for giving us this time to thank them publicly, because I think it is a very important thing to do, so we want to say thank you. Andrew, we have pens from the Samson Upper Elementary School to give to all of the members of your troop and your leaders, and we also have a pen for you, Mr. Pavelik, and we have cake, so you can take the cake home and celebrate.
Mr. Bautka, we have some food here.
Excuse me, Mrs. Brady. Andrew, that was your Eagle Scout project?
Yes.
What is your report?
I still have one more badge to do.
I want to congratulate you, because I have a lot of people know that Eagle Scout is a lifelong endeavor, and very few essential scouts actually attain that rank, so I'd like to talk to you.
Thanks.
All right, group shot.
You can come on up. Come on up.
All right, ready, one, two, three. And that came out really well, but just one more, just in case, one, two, three.
Mrs. Brady always sends this to me, I appreciate it.
Would you like me to include in those pictures?
I'm good. Thank you.
All right, who gets the cake?
Mrs. Brady, once again, thank you very much, I know that the SUES for you and Mr. Agulhas is more than just a school, it's a place where you literally live and enjoy. Thank you, and I want to thank Mr. Baulik and all the other... the troop and everybody else that did all the work, it was really a labor of love, and we appreciate it, thank you.
Correspondents, everyone received the monthly technology report and the monthly maintenance report? Need a motion to approve the minutes of meeting of June 21st and a special meeting of June 29th.
Mr. Vashada.
Yes.
Mr. Bautka.
Yes.
Mrs. Bruno Ricculli.
Yes.
Mr. Sayet.
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto.
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. McEnroe.
Yes.
Mrs. Crapp.
Yes.
And Mrs. Beck.
Yes.
Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. Moving right along, Building to Ground, Samson Upper Elementary School Gymnasium will be used for an Indian cultural event, as well as the Mayor's Trophy Game, once again, between the Leprechauns versus the Panthers, will be using the stadium on August 21st. Any questions with Building to Grounds?
Number O'Connell.
Yes.
I have one question for Mr. DeAndrea.
Sure.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Mr. Bautka, use the microphone. Do you have a question?
As long as, number one, is that the candle use ceremony we had discussion about last year or no?
What do you mean?
Is that the ceremony that had the candles involved last year?
I'm not sure, this group uses the Indian... this has been going on at the SUES, and at some... especially at Samson, I think, and you could tell me, for years. And this is a major event, and this has something to do, always in the beginning of October, so I don't know if it was the candle issue, but I can't answer that, but this group has been going on, and they've been using this for many years, and we've really not had a problem. The biggest problem we have, to be honest with you, Mr. Bautka, is the problem is just so many of these Indian groups that want to use it, because I guess it falls on these two Sundays or Saturdays, and there's a whole bunch of groups that want to use it, so they're always first come, first served, and they've been using it forever, so, and they're really not a problem.
This was the other group.
This was the other group, okay, thank you. Thanks, good call, Mr. Bautka.
Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt, but he was smoking already, I didn't think you heard him.
No, I didn't, I didn't hear, let me put the mic to my mouth. The baseball field, I asked, and you sent the memo out about having the coaches get ahold of our athletic director about renovations to the baseball field, has there been any decision made?
I had not gotten a response back yet.
Well, it's about a month and a half, I know, that this memo's been out.
Again, I put it out, I'm waiting for them to respond, I know that they met with the coaches, I'm waiting on their response.
The athletic director, who?
JK.
That's who you had?
Yeah, memo went out to the athletic director, I know he did speak to the coaches, I know it was around the last day of school, and I believe, from the conversation, they actually were bringing in an outside consultant to look at Kaiser Landscape, who currently does the field maintenance, so it's in the works, I have not had anything come back to me, though.
Just as a follow... as a follow-up to that, since we're looking at the baseball field, are we also looking at the softball field?
All three.
Title IX, whatever we do to want, we have to...
Okay, no other questions, moving to B. One through six are regular resolutions, item seven on page four, discarding some old equipment, as you can see, and moving to page nine is our stipends for various ticket takers, et cetera, and announcers, athletic admission fees, Health Point Medical Group, that basically does our football games, renting our force sanitation units, which is very important, and purchase of a 24-passenger bus, is numbers 12 and 13, as well as, there's a contract with game time installation for the Samson Upper Elementary School, to put a playground together in the amount of $18.7, as well as, and this is again, just for our... what do you call that, again, a video?
Position control.
Position control, where we're just adding another kind of position, which was, we added this position with one of the five positions that we put forward, for the new positions that was approved. Any questions with section B?
I have a question.
Sure.
For number 11, with the sanitation units, did we have a look into building a permanent structure out there, or did they cost enough?
I don't think so.
Well, yes, actually, we did discuss it back years back.
We discussed it.
The Buildings and Grounds Committee discussed it when I was the only female on board, it didn't go over.
Well, the problem is, because...
Maybe we could run it though.
Because I don't think the problem is, you have to understand, it's a sanitation line.
It was something, it turned, it was...
When you're talking about a major, major...
It was, it wasn't expensive.
Yeah, a major, it's a major.
But nobody wanted to really enter.
It's like if you want to move your, you know, you have to, you know, the sanitation line's really the line that you have to pick up, and there's none of them out there, so it'll be very difficult, and probably very expensive.
But I just think people sort of just...
I don't go in... I'll take the walk into the building before I use the sanitation.
Well, that's my, if we're going to spend this budget, and that's only going to go up, it might be worth the investment, depending on how long...
I wouldn't know that, I'd have to ask Dennis, but I'm not a... I think that's a huge...
I believe several years ago, when we did discuss this...
I remember discussing it.
The number was several hundred thousand dollars.
Was, it was very high.
We have to build your up here, you have to run water, you have to sanitize every lines...
But actually, if we're going to look at the drainage out there, and you could have the Buildings and Grounds Committee put it down.
You can't, but drainage is nothing to do with that.
I know, but we're digging that.
You're talking sanitation line versus... There's so many other issues.
Maybe Mr. Vashada would like to address it at his first meeting.
I believe that one of the issues that we were going to discuss, Buildings and Grounds, we'll look at the football area from the grandstand to the entrance over there, because there has been an issue with runoff drainage, and it's kind of disastrous, if you look at it. We have a proposal, we're going to come up with proposals, if I remember correctly, I asked Mr. DeAndrea, and he got ahold of land, and land was going to look into some engineering aspects for the drainage, am I correct, did I request that about two months ago?
Not for drainage, no.
Well, then I'll renew it, then, if we could.
I mean, the only thing that we looked into was building that new path from the gate to the main entrance of the field.
Right, that was...
Which we discussed last night.
Yeah, that was a guess, we had $36,000 on that, but I'm talking about, I thought we were going to look into an issue, because we had severe runoff, not only coming down the walkway from the middle school, but also off that area from the concession stand down.
Right, and there's also a water problem on the top.
The water problem on the top is, I can give you the answer, the drains up there are totally clogged, we have not been able to open them up in nine years I've been here.
Seventeen I've been here.
Kevin's been here seventeen and nine, those things are...
I think it was like that when I was here, and that was...
Solid shot, you're not relieving that drainage problem unless you're looking to demolish some bleachers to get to it.
Mrs. Becko, what we're going to do is, Buildings and Grounds Committee is going to schedule meetings within the next month to tour schools and facilities to address issues in the forthcoming budget for 2012, '13.
I don't actually remember ever getting an official price to put a permanent bathroom, but...
I think we let, when we looked at it, almost had several hundred thousand.
If I want to bring a price back, or everybody wants to rest pretty quickly.
We're going to schedule a tour of the facilities for upgrades and renovation.
I have a question, number 14, the playground, is that for the whole school or just preschool?
I believe that's the preschool, is that correct? Yes, and it's out of funds, so...
It's basically dedicated to the preschool case.
So just the preschool case, or?
Yes, specifically sized for them, and that...
Yeah, fourth and fifth period is maybe too big from what I saw.
How much money do we have left in our funds? And is there a deadline to use it?
August, August 31st?
Yeah. And the money has to be dispersed by the...
Don't worry, it's back, we'll be spending that money.
I asked that same question about a month ago, when I saw you...
We're expecting, it's almost over time.
Are the two buses from the 10-11 budget?
No.
They're from 11-12?
Those are the two that we discussed last night, instead of leasing them to outright purchase them, but these are the ones that are in the budget to lease.
They're in the 11-12 budget?
Yes.
I have one question, finance.
Sure.
Mr. DeAndrea, I look at the bill list, our cell phone bill went up over the last couple of months, $100,000, have we added more Verizon cell phones to the list of people that have them in the district to increase the cost?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
The question is, over the last several months, I've been noticing on the Verizon wireless phone bill, that the numbers have continually gone up, have we added extra people to carry cell phones in the district, is that why the cost has increased?
Sandy, I know we've added phones, we've changed types of service of phones. So I'm going to say yes, and then some of those bills include things that you've upgraded, people who have Bluetooth and hearing devices, so that no longer hell held, and things of that nature, so that plays into the increased cost, because you're paying directly from the Verizon, and they bill it on there, so that was it, but I know we've added a few phone lines, but there's so many charges on all those bills, I know we have unlimited on all the... all of the accounts are unlimited on there, so that's where we are, you would have to analyze each month's bill to know exactly where the discrepancy is from one month to the other.
All right, one other question I have for you, check number 120180, the Rift Factory, the high school gym sound system, is that a permanent remedy to the sound system, or was that a temporary?
No, that's a essential, that's a board approved, that received board approval before we purchased it.
Thank you. Just a final question on the bill list, sorry, I noticed we purchased a plaque for former board member, Pat Limbo, are we sending him an invitation to come out to one of our meetings?
I'm waiting to find out.
Yes, we will.
Which one? Mr. Becko will let me know.
Okay, perfect.
All right. No more questions in section B, removing personnel non-certified, was an unpaid medical leave, blatant statement of a bad steel stipend, longevity payments and adjustments, retroactive change to the salary, as well as a bus aid, and to bus driver, and there is a huge document that's out there, that's dispersed out, which is the non-certificated personnel as per attachment A, and these are all non-certified people that we are now approving for the 11-12 school year. Number eight on page 11 is the following bus aids and their rate, part-timers for the various schools, secretaries, the different bus drivers and their longevity, their amounts, if you go to the next page, page 12, professional, for the extended school year, there are some adjustments with that, as well as tuition for the preschool, and that's actually our both school and preschool, which they're receiving a 2% increase, and approved 13, the salaries assigned to those individuals, and I want to congratulate Donna Golden, for being the new Eisenhower School president. I've had a long day. One guy in the back is waiting. Custodial, there's some custodial transfers, as well as a summer conference for inclusive education for parent-professional, and a substitute list, any questions with section C?
I have a question, I have a question. Number 15, and I know there's subsequent one in the next section, the summer conference, this was approved retroactively, yet it happened at the end of June, it says here, and it says it in the other one, too, it's, I think, the question we were saying, to approve the payment for hours of attendance under hourly rates, this came from our funds, too?
Yes.
So this is for, so whatever the people got paid during the year is what they paid, they got paid in the summer?
To go, yes.
To go, so we pay people to go to the...
Correct. Always for this inclusive education, it's sort of an oxymoron, but, you know...
Is this like a training?
This is a major training that they go through, for the inclusive education. Moving to section D, there's a retirement, I worked at Rosa Corbett, excellent Spanish teacher, I wish her very well, she was really a pleasure to work with, also, there's a resignation on that list, as well, a few resignations, and again, these are all certificated people, which are attachment A for the 2011-12 school year, there's a femoral leave for an individual for the six-week program, and number six, finally, I get to it, the Board of Education requested to approve upon the recommendation of superintendent, the appointment of Justin Fury, who's sitting in the back, as principal of the Eisenhower School at appropriate salary of $104,299, effective August 1, 2011, pending release from the current contract, the above salary is based upon the 2010-11 Principal Salary Guide, and is an asterisk, salary will change according to the 2011-12 Salary Guide. Congratulations, Justin, you understand that? We want to reach you out, it's a pleasure, obviously, I'll be calling you, and we'll be talking more tomorrow, and we'll try to figure it out, if you do last to the end of the meeting, God bless you, we could talk a little bit, hopefully, we won't be too late tonight, and certainly, if you do last, we could talk before you leave. Congratulations, and thank you for choosing Saturday. Moving right along, this again is for the control roster, we're just moving people around, this is a transfer, nine is also a transfer in Eisenhower School, that was made by the past principal, who made a few changes to the roster before he left. Once again, as was mentioned before, this is this inclusion program, that was held at Georgia Court, and we discussed that at the last time, as well as attendance, a non-violent crisis intervention training, which was done on July, which will be done from July 19th to July 22nd, as well as, there is an entire section of older people that we just hired, we probably, I know the next question's going to be, how many open slots do we have, we probably still have at this point right now, I would say about 25, so we really dropped it down, it was about 35, we hired about 10 people at the last week or two, then I'm going to start coming in now, very quickly, I think most of the supervisors and the principals have done their due diligence, and they're just, you know, waiting to send them to my office, so we're just about there. Number 12 is substitutes, for regular substitutes, and 13 is for class five, which is our principal substitutes, I would like to add an individual on number 13, which is Harry Bell, he also comes in as substitutes, so please add him to the other people that are there, these are extracurricular assignments, which are listed there, Frosch advisors, and salary adjustments for credit change, which is listed on number 15, as well as coaching assignments, which run from pages 18, 19, and 20, and there are also, again, football announcers, basketball timers, and all that jazz for the 2011-12 school year, which is on page 20, 15 is a professional day that we're approving for August, and 19 is another event that will be spearheaded by the Summer Engagement Program, which is an excellent program, and the teacher will be Gina Duda. Any questions with section D certified personnel?
Dr. O'Connell?
Yes, sir.
With regard to the two high school resignations, are there any trends that we need to be aware of, because I know it's certainly not a market for employment out there for teachers, are there any trends that we need to be aware of?
You know, I was...
Coincidental.
I think it's more coincidental, this is unusual.
That's why I asked you.
Other than people retiring.
Right.
Which I thought there were more, more people retiring, so this is kind of coincidental, I really don't know why, I think one person's moving, she said her husband's leaving, any other person, I'm not really sure why.
Got a job closer to home.
Yeah.
Oh, so...
At a tremendous reduction in travel.
Nope, there's nothing for policy. Moving to F, a football booster, clothing drive, junior cheerleading, performance on October 21st, the regular special services resolutions that run from pages 22 to 23, any questions with that section? With none, moving to co-curricular, basically, these are the entry fees for all the different NJ, SI, AA, and Middlesex Conference, and moving down to the, if you move right down, these are all part of our extracurricular activities, and if you see in number six, it's the request to appoint the various coaching aides on P, and I want to thank those individuals for the most part, because they do this unselfishly, and they really don't get anything to do with, and it's very nice that they take the time out to help our children. Any questions with that section?
I have a question.
Sure.
Number six would be on P, anyone on here that's not an employee, are they subject to background checks as well?
Yes.
So do they have to do that at their own expense, how does that work?
Yes.
And they do that at their own expense?
They actually lose money to be involved, too, believe in that.
We can, we can, I can fast that.
Yeah, they actually lose money, yeah, I don't think they're paid a full rate, but they pay to get their fingerprints, and I guess you guys can relate to that. H, ways of transportation, there's a Samson Summer Engagement Program, trip to Rutgers, and that concludes my report.
You have to be done.
Oh, sorry, thank you, that's why you... Bill's got my back. Mr. DeAndrea. Could order a little more food. Finance on the addendum, our, basically, 16, 17, 18 is all for the role consultants for special education, and number five is a workshop that is an excellent workshop, because we're actually getting equipment with it, so, and at the same time, we're being trained in, and I'm sure we're going to turnkey to adjust to the staff, 23, again, is the extended school year, related services, related services personnel, and it's just a few cent difference we made when we moved from one year to the next, we had to make that adjustment.
Question, the iPad workshop, you said we're getting equipment?
We get iPads with it.
Right, what is that going to be used for, do you know yet? The iPads where they're...
Well, they're going to be used for, obviously, these people will be using it for their own use, but at the same time, there are, there's a major program that we're about to start, that is going to deal with walkthroughs.
So it's only an iPad for the person coming?
Correct.
We're getting any iPads for the district?
No, I would...
I have iPads on the buildings.
I would.
We're picking up additional iPads for other supervisors through Title I as well. Okay, so all the iPads we're buying are for staff, not for students? But to use or test programs that will be used by students, before we make a big investment, we want to try them out pilot first.
And plus, we're ordering, how much, Mr. DeAndrea, in equipment?
A number for the elementary.
A number, thousands of different...
Yeah, for the elementary.
...equipment that we're getting for the students as well.
Dr. O'Connell, could you briefly highlight that program with the...
Sure.
...the iPads, because I know you and I have discussed it.
Sure, what the administrators now are doing, and this is, this is an initiative that we've put forward, probably for the last two years, for the Instruction Committee, we are now going to go into a new instructional model, an evaluation model, and it's going to pretty much simulate the Danielson model, and we want to, and we're at this point now where the government has said, they want everything from an accountability perspective, so we're going online with everything, so electronically, all our evaluations, including walkthroughs, is going to be electronic, and people are going to walk in into classrooms with iPads and/or their laptops, and they're going to start, and then this, these programs, programs that we're purchasing through, I think it's out of funds or through money that we had through our association, we're basically going to be able to utilize and be able to document exactly...
Because I know you and I have discussed it.
Sure, what the administrators now are doing, and this is, this is an initiative that we've put forward probably for the last two years for the Instruction Committee. We are approximately, we are now going to go into a new instructional model, evaluation model, and it's going to pretty much simulate the Danielson model. And we want to, and we were at this point now where the government has said, they want everything from an accountability perspective, so we're going online with everything. So electronically, all our evaluations, including walkthroughs, is going to be electronic. And people are going to walk in into classrooms with iPads and/or their laptops. And they're going to start, and then this, these programs, program that we're purchasing through, I think it's out of funds or through money that we had through our association, we're basically going to be able to utilize and be able to document exactly what kind of instruction is being used at that time when we walk into that classroom. And plus Kevin and I talked about that I can then go online and see exactly where everybody is in the evaluation process and actually look at, rather than having paper evaluations, everything is going to be done, and I know there's quite a few board members that have been waiting for that. And everything will be done electronically. And then hopefully from that, we piggyback and get more electronic into the classroom. And literally, the next goal is to get us all electronic, the administrative team, and then move towards a one-to-one initiative. And obviously, that's much more expensive because you're dealing with many more computers that you're going to have to buy and/or iPads. So we're really, we're trying to move into the 21st century, and I think this is going to be a really worthwhile project. And it's all about accountability, and the state is requiring us, we're way ahead of the state. The state is requiring us to move towards a model that we can evaluate and determine and assess exactly what's going on in the classrooms. And then move forward down the road a year from now, when the new model for evaluation is going to be based on, and I don't know if this is going to be true, 50% of what the teachers are doing in the classroom. If they drop to 25, I don't know, but the existing plan right now is 50% of a teacher's evaluation is going to be based on how well their students do on assessments and what they're doing in classrooms. So it's going to be, it's going to be a time where, you know, assessment and evaluation is going to be a big deal. And we're, you know, we're going to move towards that.
Any other board questions? I'll open it to the public for any questions on the agenda items only.
Carter Kilcunens, 22 Schenectady. First of all, Dr. Alfano, I think I went through this once before. The name of the school is Samso, not S U E S. I counted the letters in Slaver, it's seven letters. You could type out seven letters for Slaver, but all the equipment, again, S U E S. I find it a total insult to the Samso family every time it's referred to as S U E S. I don't hear AES for Arlith or EES for Eisenhower or any other school. And I feel you ahead of the school system should make an effort to call it Samso. Dr. Alfano, do you hear me?
I hear you. I'm listening.
I think it's a total insult, and it starts with you. And you refer to it and even in your agenda. Also.
Thank you.
The addendum A, we only received one copy for the attachment to each table. There didn't seem to be enough copies to go around. And I think something as important as that, as all the salaries, and I'd like to know why there wasn't enough copies made. Was this a last minute decision or whatever to provide the public with the salary list?
Are you talking about the addendum or the attachment A?
The attachment. Of the salaries, yes. And that's referred to, I believe, here, that you're voting on.
So people don't have copies?
No, we were given one per table. And briefly could pass around and look while all this was going on. I think it's very important to know the salaries, and I'd also like to know, I know I missed the last two meetings, which I apologize for. Were these salary increases discussed openly at the meetings? They were?
Most of these salary increases are contractual. Most of them are from the SEA contract.
Right.
Which was voted on months ago. At the last meeting that you attended, we voted on the 10-11 salaries that were the retroactive pay based on the contract. These are for the future salaries. The majority of the salaries in here are contractual. The salaries that are non-SEA, we're discussing closed session.
We're discussing closed session. Well, like I said many times that I came here, the open dialogue, I think certain things should not be closed session. And it should be in the public and to know what's discussed.
And we should have enough copies for everybody.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the public? Not, I'll close the public portion.
Motion to accept the superintendent's report. Second motion.
Roll call.
Mr. Balka?
I need to abstain on section seven, section C, number seven, attachment A, Wayne Cronaski. And section D, number four, attachment A, Devon Cronaski and Lisa Iker. Yes, and all our others.
Could you please speak on, Mr. Balka? I don't think anybody at this end could hear you. Yeah, I don't know, I don't think the mics are on at this end of the.
I don't think they're all working on.
No, they're on, to keep the feedback down, you can't want them off. Last time we complained about the feedback, so they adjusted down.
You should have to speak closer to them.
Even Mr. Bishada, you're not as loud as you normally are, although I can hear you. Usually you're louder, so I think this side is also not as loud.
Shall we play switch then?
No, I just abstain on Cronaski, Cronaski, and Iker on attachment A.
Do you?
No.
No?
Did you hear?
Mr. Bishada?
Wait, let me get my.
Mr. Bishada, we're up to you for roll call.
Yes.
Mrs. Bruno Ricuya.
Yes.
Mr. Sayah.
Yes.
Mrs. Beth DePinto.
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. Macino.
Yes, congratulations, Mr. Burey.
Mrs. Trapp.
Yes.
And Mrs. Backer.
Yes, with the exception of number seven, page 10, personnel non-certified.
I'm sorry, which?
Page 10. Number seven.
No, to the whole attachment?
No, just.
Non-certified.
Non-certified. Is that because?
Section D, sir.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's the whole non-certified staff. That's what, this was a group change. That's all, that's what I'm making sure to, it's the whole staff.
You asking a question?
Yes.
The whole attachment for the non-certified.
Can I ask if that's because there was not done in open?
No, it's because.
That's fine, you don't. Well, I mean, you can answer if you want, but that was just my question.
Committee reports finance, Mr. Balka?
Yes, Finance Committee met with Mr. Andrew and Dr. Alfano on June 24th to discuss excess fund balance and come up with a number to reserve for future capital projects in the 2012-13 budget, and we came up with the number of $1 million, $200,000.
He's near it, it's just it's not so.
And then we have the special meeting on the 29th to formalize.
I just also want to mention, we did have a meeting last night, the public attended to discuss the $752,000 that we received in extra state aid. The decision rendered by the board at the time last night, with limited knowledge and little guidance, the board decided not to put it to tax relief for the 10-11 budget, but rather to appropriate it for what the majority of the board believes we will be able to appropriate for capital projects of some sort. Everybody agreed that that's what we agreed on last night. So until we get further direction from the state, we're just going to hold out for now. Delegates of the New Jersey School Boards Association.
Since the pension and benefit reform was signed by the governor on June 28th, things in New Jersey have been relatively quiet. At the national level, the national school boards were still working with Arnie Duncan, trying to get some relief with regard to the NCLB requirements. NSBA did issue out a survey, which was, which I shared with Ms. Sudlin regarding NCLB, because the US Department of Education chief is basically looking for a direction or input with regard to what priority of waivers or what priority of flexibility with regard to changes of NCLB do we feel are the most important. So NSBA was surveying local districts to gather that information. Other than that, everything is quiet for the summer, we don't know how long that will last.
Discussion, Dr. Alfano?
Thank you, Mr. Backer. I'm going to ask Ms. Sudlin to talk a little bit about this as well. And you received this in your board packet?
We received a request from State TV to use the television studio at the high school and to use that equipment. The appropriate forms have been filled out, the appropriate insurance has been applied for and approved. It's up to the board now to decide if there are any exemptions to the requirements that we have for all other users of facilities. In this particular instance, personnel from State TV are requesting the use of TV studio equipment. In the past, when someone has asked to use the facility, such as this cafeteria, this kitchen, they've had to pay for the use of a person, a cafeteria person, employee of the district who knows the equipment and knows how to use it. The request from State TV, if it follows all of the regular requirements, if they want to use high school TV studio equipment, we would require them to have either a technician, a district technician, or the TV studio certified teacher there during the hours when they are there. They have requested Saturday hours, again, as any other person who wants or entity that wants to use our facility, it has to be during the Saturday hours when the high school is open. If there are any exceptions to these requirements, which are required of all other groups that use our facilities, there needs to be discussion of that now so that we can let State TV know what would be required for the use of just the studio or studio and equipment on Saturdays at the high school.
Okay, this says you've been in negotiation for a while, what was the holdup? Were we hesitant to do it, or?
Yes, there was great hesitancy about the use of the equipment.
And that hesitancy is gone?
It won't be unless the equipment is used with one of our certified people present during its use.
Has this been discussed with the people in the high school that use that and the personnel that would have to be available for them?
It would be a requirement.
Right, when you said they wanted it on Saturday and one of our people would have to be there.
State TV wants it on Saturday, if they want it on Saturday, we'd have to make sure that one of our people at State TV's expense was paid their hourly rate to be there during the time that State TV is there if they are using our equipment.
Is State TV objecting to that, or are they okay with that?
They're looking to us for what would it take for them to use the TV studio.
And they're objecting to it?
No.
Oh, oh, you took it correct.
We're just trying to put something together and see what you think. You know, they wanted to use the facility, and we said, fine, as long as we have custodians in the building, you can use it. Once they get into our equipment, you know, our teacher and Sandy were a little bit concerned because we don't know who's using it and for what reasons. And certainly, we could, you know, help them use them, you know, we have a lot of very expensive equipment up there. We don't have a problem with them using the room because I think that may be their biggest concern is to get to use the room because of the lighting and things of that nature. There's really no issue there. We could try to. It's the equipment. The issue too is that we will make ourselves available. I mean, Sandy has always been available and knows the situation, has been talking to them for a very long time. And in all due respect, we're trying to get this done. We want to see where you're at, we tried to put something together that we thought was fair. We don't want to make it so expensive that they're not going to want to even come near us. But at the same time, we want to protect the equipment that we have there. I'm not saying they're going to abuse it, but there's a lot of stuff in that room that, you know, I have no idea what it's even like. I mean, it's, it's, it's a, they're complicated pieces of equipment.
Do they have their own equipment?
I would think that they do, okay, but I don't think that they have.
I would think that they don't.
Well, I don't think, I don't think they have the type of equipment that we have. Let me put it to you this way.
Well, what would they do when they're really worried to have no equipment?
Well, I'm assuming they might do, they might, like, they might do some editing, they make, if they want to use our cameras. I mean, their goal is to try to get to use, I would think, the equipment that we have in there and work together. And that's what we're trying to do, I don't want to, you know, make this so that they can't use it, but at the same time, we've got to be careful, if anybody came in and said they wanted to use, like Carl was saying, cafeteria, so they wanted to use our ovens. We don't let them.
This gentleman's.
This gentleman said, I don't know who he is, I just somebody told me, he's Ruud. How are you? How do you say your first name?
It's Ruud.
Ruud, how are you? I'm sorry, I just found that out when I was walking up, so. But it's. It's good to meet you at least, you and I keep talking back and forth with email. But you can maybe answer some of the questions that I certainly can't.
I'm going to speak in front of the board.
All right.
State TV is supposed to serve not only the borough, but also the Board of Education. We're trying to create programming for a channel that we have in system three, but we haven't been able to do anything because of facilities.
You've got to turn your mic on.
Well, let's talk closer.
I think it's science. It's too loud. Which my recommendation is to speak like this or raise it behind you. And by the way, that audience, I'm going to direct it to the camera, I learned, so that's another recommendation. So I've been trying to use the facilities for over two, two years. We've been in discussions with Carlos Edlin and Sam Paul. I never knew why, except for the salary, that was one of the things, the excitement, I think that's what's called. But we don't necessarily need the equipment. I have my own equipment, I got over $30,000 invested in my own equipment, if I have to, I will bring it. I think it's, being a resident and being taxpayer, I think I should be able to use the facilities as a volunteer for State TV. I don't tend to break it, I do have more or equal value equipment. And I've been doing this for a long time, since 94. So if anybody wants to ask questions, I can answer.
So everything you use the room for will be for State TV?
Correct. The facilities will be reused for creating programming for State TV. We have currently a table talk, which we would like to use the room for recording. Also, the board is also very welcome to join during one of our sessions. Basically, what we, the table talk exists to, sorry, I'm a little nervous, I'm probably here. Table talk exists to let the audience know of events, like, for example, discussions that took place that somebody had missed. Am I coming here, am I coming here? I think I'm better at answering questions than trying to.
I have a question, you said you have your own equipment, $50,000 of equipment?
I have my own equipment.
So why do you?
I'm a producer.
And you need ours because, I'm confused.
I'm working as a volunteer for the town, why should we, why should I provide myself? I've been providing myself for years, but why can't we use the facilities at no cost, to make no expense to make?
Because we have a right, we have responsibility to the equipment, so if something did get broken, what happens? Do you give us your equipment? No, that's the concern, we want to do as many things as we can with the market.
Right.
But we're ultimately responsible for the equipment that we purchased with taxpayer dollars, so that's our concern. Not that we don't trust you, that you're going to steal something, but we have somebody there, so we have some coverage. And if something happens, then school district insurance can cover that.
Now, the liability insurance that I provided, cover any damage that might occur to the equipment?
Guess it would.
Okay.
But there's still, there's still the issue of somebody being there who knows the equipment.
But really, what you don't understand, let's say somebody goes in there and something breaks, let's just say, and your insurance covers it. My TV studio and students go in there the next day, and they can't conduct their class because something happened to their equipment. I mean, I get, believe me, I want to do what you want to do. I don't want to stop you, I want, not that I want to be on State TV, but in all due respect, I hear what you're saying, and we're trying to make this work, but there's, that's really the major issue too. That if, and that's what happens, stuff, and I'm not saying you're going to use it, but other people are going to use it. You're not just going to be the only person. Stuff, and I'm not saying you're going to use it, but other people are going to use it. You're not just going to be the only person there.
The intent is we'd be there most of the time.
And, see, your intent is to be there most of the times. But let's say somebody else goes in there, we walk in the next day, two monitors are broken. Okay, insurance picks it up, but until we pick up two more monitors, those kids don't have two monitors to work with for, and, I mean, this is the best solution, and we're not looking to charge you a ton of money. Obviously, if you wanted to use it and we can work it out where the person is, let's say, there and we don't have to pay, you may want to try to work that out where, and you can also speak to Ms. Sandy and you can also speak to Tara, which I'm sure they're going to try to work with you. We're not going to, you know, charge you thousands of dollars to use the studio. You know, assuming, assuming you don't come in on a Sunday. I mean, that would be the craziest thing to do.
Well, the Saturday was the first choice we are willing to take during the.
But see, and here's the problem with Saturday. We may only have a skeleton crew on on a Saturday, but you can use it. But Rui, you're taking a tremendous amount of responsibility, opening up the facility, walking into that room. You've got fifty thousand dollars worth of equipment, you're saying. You know how much equipment's in that room? You want to be responsible for a hundred grand, two hundred grand, then I walk in the next morning, you say, "No, I had nothing to do with it."
It was fine when I left.
It was fine when I left. Believe me, I, you know, I was a coach and half of the time, an A.D., and every time somebody would say something would happen over the weekend, the coach would say, "It wasn't me, I didn't, nothing happened." You know, once you open up the facility, you're opening up the keys to the rear door. And that's another thing too, what happens, but you see what I'm saying. And we're not going to say that you can't use the facility. I think what you need to do is to try to work it out. And it's, it's not going to come out of your pocket. My assumption is State TV has some money to be able to do these kind of things. Because I don't think anybody is going to allow anybody to walk into their studio for free and use it, unless they have somebody there watching what you're doing and they're being paid to be there. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know. And I don't want to, you've been more than nice. You know, you and I have nice conversations, we're going back and forth, and I'd love to just say that you can use the room, no restrictions. But I, I work for these people here, and I know that they're going to say to me if something happens, they're not going to pat me on the back and say, "I realized what you were doing." There's a lot of variables here, Rui, and we'll try to work with you. I mean, Sandy's always here, we're trying to work with you so that you don't have to pay extravagant fees. And you make, Saturday's a tough day, nobody's here. I don't expect Sandy or Tara Beam to come in on a day that they're not working.
Well, like I said, Saturday was the first choice, there was new choices.
And I know you're working during the week. I get that, I understand that. I mean, you're doing this as a volunteer and I respect you for that.
Is State TV funded by the boroughs?
Yes, we have a fourteen thousand dollar budget right now.
Fourteen thousand?
Yep.
So you would be doing programming that you can't do now, that's why you need the room?
Correct. For example, our last table talk was shot in my basement. So just to show you what facilities we have. I'm doing the editing on my own computer and I'm using my own cameras. We do have, the borough does have two cameras, which we'll be using if we're not allowed to use your equipment. So we can do that. In terms of editing, I'll continue doing the editing at my own house and.
And you can use the facility and we can work it out. If you want, you could call me and, or Sandy, I'm sure you're in contact with Sandy all the time. And the bottom line is, we're trying to work together. And I understand, you know, logistics is sometimes not easy.
Even if I don't want to use the equipment, even if I only don't want to use the room, I have to have somebody there.
No, if you want to use the room, your room is yours, you can use it, but you just need to obviously go through the channels of signing up. Well, I'm saying, I'm assuming that's what we're saying, the board being saying, "No." But I'm just, I'm just letting you know that.
I'm worried about the students and be able to come in and everything.
No, I'm saying, if we take the uses of the equipment off the application or the request and just limit it to the uses of the room and the lighting.
He said otherwise, use it on Saturday and the kids are not there, and obviously you're not.
I'm still uncomfortable.
And that's what we have to find out from the board.
Yeah, I think you still may open yourself to the same liability. You're going to walk in there, what if something's broken the following?
Look, guys, we're just asking for direction and I agree with you, Kevin. But we're trying to, this gentleman's been really trying and he's been very patient and I respect him for what he's trying to do. And I understand your position, so we're trying to try and, you know, walk that fine line. But if the board says, "No, the use of the room is off limits for any reasons," then, well, you know, he's sitting, standing right here, he'll understand that, but we're trying to compromise here and I understand what Laura said.
In other words, if he wanted you to have someone present, you can't do it?
No, no, I can't commit to have to making the State TV or the borough pay for something. I don't have that authority.
Okay.
What I'm saying is, I'm trying to get different choices, okay? I know if I have the use of the equipment, I need somebody there. Now, if I don't have use of the equipment, only the room and the lighting, do I have somebody, do I need somebody there?
Light in terms of special lighting would be a question.
We have a policy on use in schools.
Yeah.
So nothing so far violates the use of that policy rather.
Well, if you're giving, you could charge them for the use of the room.
Yes.
So what we're saying is, is you're waiving that policy. It's like fifty dollars, technically fifty dollars to use the room. I mean, every time he'd go in, it'd say, what is it, fifty, a hundred fifty, I forget what it is. Oh, it's fifty dollars for.
Fifty dollars per room?
It was a hundred fifty, basically a hundred fifty dollars every time he uses it. But the thing is, what we're trying to do here is, let's, let's just put this to bed. This is, like he said, this has been going on, and we tried to keep this out of the board, but it's gotten to the point now where I agree with him, it's got to come, it's got to come to a head and we've got to make a decision what we want to do here. So we made a recommendation based on what we thought was kind of a compromise, but certainly if the board feels that nobody should be in that room for any reason, you're the boss.
I think it's a good community service project. Are you comfortable operating under these recommendations? That is the high school staff comfortable with these recommendations you just laid out for us?
Well, as far as, as far as, yes, because we try to work with everybody. And I know this gentleman's worked very hard to try to make State TV work. And in all due respect, he is providing a service for us too, and that would be, you know, hopefully, we can get more involved in State TV. And I know Tara is really, our TV studio teacher is very interested in it and is working with Rui and as well as Sandy to try to make this thing go. You know, I understand, we're very concerned, I agree with Laurie, we're very concerned about the equipment that we have in the room. But we also have to, you know, sometimes he's got a million dollars of insurance. The bottom line is, is that if God forbid something happens.
Dr. Armani, can you just clarify what your recommendation is?
Our recommendation is actually what Carl had said, that basically we allow you to use the room free of charge if there's custodians and the building is open. However, if he wanted to use any equipment, he would have to have somebody on site. You know, so if he brings his own equipment, God bless you, knock yourself out.
Where is the equipment?
Well, he, he might bring his own, I mean, I don't know.
I'm saying our equipment.
No, he's not going to touch our equipment, he's saying.
I'm saying where is our?
It's in that room.
Is it locked up?
No, no, it's out there.
And not to say that you wouldn't do it, but you never know who the next.
There's old computers, it's a really sophisticated room, it's not like.
Can I say something? I did practice in Cleveland.
We also intend to use it only once, not more than once.
What does State TV broadcast? Is that the channel sixteen with its council meetings?
Yes.
Okay, what if you actually aired, because I watched that.
I'm sorry?
What actually have you aired from State TV? Is that all State TV that airs that? The council meetings?
Council meetings, the board of ed, board of ed meetings, yeah.
You know, my feeling is, I'm a little apprehensive to say a public building is off limits, especially if this is something that the borough is buying. You know, I think the more we do together with the borough, and the gentleman's here, he has a million dollars' worth of insurance. We see him, he's on TV, and he's saying that he's going to be responsible for this. And, you know, I'm okay with him using the room if he wants to look at his own equipment here. Maybe after doing that, the program is so good, we can add our community budget talks on there and all those types of things. And I think we build that relationship up and before you know, maybe we can, you know, transition to use the equipment. Or incorporate some of your work as a project for the kids to do while they're in school, to work on editing.
If you look at the guidelines that I was able to create guidelines for State TV, the guidelines say that State TV is owned by the borough, but is used both with board of ed and by the borough. Now, that's the intent, you know, we want most, for example, I've asked several times to have the show that the kids broadcast from here to be broadcast on State TV, because I think the content is important. I'm sorry?
The plays?
No, you can't make a broadcast plays.
You said the show.
There's a morning, I don't think it's still current.
The morning show.
So I've asked that, for that show to go on several times and hasn't been put on because somebody has provided us. Now, there is other things that we can do. We have the cooking teacher, I spoke to her, she's interested in doing a cooking show. Why not have the students do it?
Some second.
Is there a limited number of people that you have in your group that would be here?
Right now, yeah, we're very, it's a very small group.
So we're only going to open it up to a handful of people?
It's about six people, right now.
That are under.
And if you want to require for us to get, bring a bridge, like I heard you guys mention, that's more, I don't see a problem with that.
Sir, sir, are you trustworthy?
I believe so.
Yankees are on.
Dr. Althano, who'll look at the insurance policy?
We do. We, everybody who uses the facility, Joe Hospador and the facility, he said it's provided, yeah.
It's the boroughs.
He's been very good about.
And your name is an additional insurer?
Yes.
Yes.
He has to follow, just like anybody else, just like we just approved these people, he has to do the same thing. He just is going to have to give us some dates, when he wants, if the board agrees, what dates he's going to use them, and then we'll put them into.
So is this like with the normal room with Joe Hospador?
Yes, yes, yes. He knows Joe pretty well.
I have a question. Did you say, like, once a month?
Once a month.
So how many hours is it?
Three hours.
Three hours.
Within those three hours, we should be able to shoot two shows.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that.
And then what you could do is just give us the dates, we post it in the board report and we're done. He doesn't even need to do that, we just go through the actual changes.
But would you do it for like a three month period? Would you let me know?
No.
Tom?
No.
Dan?
If anybody's going to use the facility, we have a policy that they pay to use the facility, that's what it is.
In the news for the borough?
That's it, hey, you've got one or five.
Seven to two.
Press on.
I would like to suggest with that, like, just three months. Dates, dates, time.
Dates and times.
If you're not using the equipment, just bring your own.
Now, remember, if you want to use the room, if you want to use the equipment, you have to have somebody there. And you have, that has to be part of your application.
I'm sure we'll be so impressed with your programming that before you know it, it will be.
Hopefully, some people will be coming to table talk.
Thank you.
We have some topics.
We're in it. And get the sound working on our meetings on TV.
Well, like I was saying, that camera doesn't have your audio connected directly to it. So one of the reasons why it might be so low is there's no connection to it.
But we can't even hear each other's arms.
Right. Well, that's the difference, now you have to hold the mic to get close enough.
Thanks, Rui. I appreciate it.
Mr. DeAndrino, do you have something for discussion?
Grievance number eight. I'll read it, if someone wishes to make a motion, a second. The Board of Education hereby one denies State of the Education Association grievance eight dash two zero one one at level three and two directs the board secretary to respond to the S.E.A. on behalf of the board in writing within the ten working days.
Need a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Go ahead, second.
Second.
I'm sorry.
Roll call.
Who's the second?
Laurie.
Laurie. Mr. Malkin?
Yes.
Mr. Bishada?
Yes.
Mrs. Bruno Recuyas?
Yes.
Mr. Syak?
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. McInum?
Yes.
Mrs. Pratt?
Yes.
And Mrs. Beck.
Yes.
Just wanted to mention.
Does anybody else have anything else for discussion?
I noticed that the last couple of meetings, no one on the board is using these laptops, so my recommendation, I know you got that as your book rest. Well, Mr. Your tech.
No, there are a couple of people using it.
If we're not going to use them, then I was just saying, you know, why have them set them up and take them down every meeting?
I did ask that.
I mean, I know it makes us look smarter from the audience perspective.
Well, none of them's closed.
I tend to agree with you, Mr. McInum, the reason we had them, obviously, just so that people know, is that we were going to go completely wireless and that didn't really work, unpayable.
Right, but you started bringing paper agendas for everybody.
Because, because it was getting tough for people to write on them and people were concerned about it.
I've always been okay.
You can't erase on the computer. So, yes, Ms. Bull, you don't have to set them up anymore. Okay, Sandy? I mean, I'm sure that makes you happy.
If you would like to come a little earlier.
That's the fastest decision I've made to make.
I could just get hooked up to the internet. Anything else for discussion?
I, there's one other item for discussion, but it's actually not mine, it's Mrs. Bruno Recuyas, we had talked about it.
Would you like to address it?
The curriculum approval and the process. I want to give you credit for it, so.
My suggestion was, since we're going to be doing committee reports as a board, that our assistant superintendent and our director of curriculum and instruction would also give reports to the board about what they've done, instead of Dr. Althano doing everything.
Don't you like my reports?
I love your reports, Dr. Althano, but I think it's not always clear to the public what everyone is doing. And this way, that can be, especially with the curriculum and instruction, when there are changes in the curriculum, we're not, we don't always know what those changes are, how we're moving forward, what the new technologies are that are being incorporated into the curriculum. So if that could be reported, not just to the board, but to the public as a whole, and maybe not every month, depending on what's going on, what it is.
Well, just have it on the agenda, and then just like we do, so if we have a report, we have a report.
So you don't discuss it with the director of the board?
Yeah, I've already discussed that.
Anything else for discussion? If not, I'll open, I'll open it up to the public for any and all comments.
Hello, Allison Marbeck, Seven Dr. Wood Drive. Just a couple of things, because I didn't see, and I was in at the last couple of meetings. Where are we with the district survey? Is that underway? Did that ever happen? Did we ever get anything, feedback from that?
Yes.
I'm not sure.
The one from survey? It's okay to find out about the demographic.
No, we haven't, we haven't done it. We backed off of that, because right now, we're still taking a look at using other avenues rather than redistricting at this particular point. So we put an extra person in Eisenhower and I believe we put a couple, one in the high school. We've kind of stretched them out, I think every school has got one except for two of them, so we did put an extra teacher each building.
But now with Eisenhower, every single classroom is used up. Like, our Spanish teacher's going to go on a part. You know, which he'll be fine with, but now we have, you know, we were five hundred and forty-five students if we keep, because we keep building every year, because they still have all those townhouses that still need to get filled, what are we going to do, you know, when it becomes five sixty, five seventy, which could happen very quickly, you know, and now we're not doing a demographic survey to try to understand where, where these children are going to come from. You know, we have nothing, we have nowhere else to go, except in the hallway, you know, that's what could happen. You know, we're already at maximum capacity. I really thought, I really thought that the demographic survey was something that was approved by the board to go ahead. It was the ten thousand dollars recital, and it was going to happen.
The problem, Allison, is that there's really not many places for anyone to go. Eisenhower right now is probably the most overcrowded elementary, but you also have Truman School's burst in at it seems.
But then there's two other elementary schools.
It's pretty crowded as well, and to be honest with you, Wilson, there is no room. Every room is used. The other thing too is, we're going to have to take a look at certainly whether or not, you know, what happens down the road as far as the budget's concerned. This year we passed, and we added five teachers to the budget, five additional staff. God forbid the budget fails, or things are not going to be very good next year, you're not going to increase your staff. So it doesn't matter if you move people around, you're not going to have the staff to fill it. So I'm not really sure that this, you know, that this particular point, we're going to go, and I agree with you, Eisenhower is probably the most crowded of all the schools, I'm not going to deny that. This year, we bought ourselves a year. We'll see what the, what the demographic is bringing, we'll see what, how much the population goes up. Sooner or later, we may have to do something.
Wouldn't you want to know that ahead of time?
Well, we kind of know, we know, we know, our population for the last three years has not budged.
No, but well, with Eisenhower it has.
Listen to me, our population has not grown, not, I don't think fifty kids in the last three years, except for, and we do have a demographic study, because we keep track of the enrollments constantly, and. And we know every month where those enrollments are going. I don't have them in front of me, because this isn't a month where we keep the enrollment. June is the last month. And the enrollments drop from the beginning of the year to the end of the year.
But it's going up at Eisenhower.
Right.
But you have people moving.
And it's a very, yeah, it's a transient.
Right, but it's going up at Eisenhower, but we're saying we don't have room at the other three elementary schools.
So, the other alternative is to do what? I mean, we talk about some other things that possibly, you know, to.
But if you're saying the other three elementary schools, if their, if their population isn't changing and Eisenhower is, wouldn't it make sense to put some other students in the other?
It might make, yeah, sure. And I'm not saying that we're not gonna do that. I mean, we can easily do that, and all we're gonna do is we might, you know, depending on if the population goes, like you say, if it goes up to 600 or 650, you know, there's no, there's no other recourse. We either have to build onto the building, or we have to obviously ship students out.
But would you need to plan for that now?
We are planning for that. We are.
So, with the $752,000 that may be ordered and put towards capital projects, I would hope that that would be a definite, you know. Consideration. Yeah. You know, to really look at that, because there really is no, there, you know, the classrooms that are being used back when I went were custodian closets, and now there are classrooms.
Why don't you just make a suggestion that the reorganization committee may be able to discuss this? There was talk about moving a class out of Eisenhower into Arlen. Can you just revisit that and see if that's going to work?
Are you saying Arlen is well now?
No, because I remember we had discussed that there was a classroom available in Arlen, and Mr. Byrne had brought it up, that maybe there would be able to move it. So, maybe the fact that you said every classroom is.
I don't know. Mrs. Duffy's looking very inquisitive about it, because we have, remember, we have a ton of special education classes that are eating up tons of rooms in all its schools.
In Arlen, but I remember that Byrne had brought it up.
I can take a look at it, and I am not opposed. No, this September, you're, like she, like Allison said, we have, what is it, art on a court or Spanish on a court?
Spanish.
It's one of the things.
So, is that the only thing that's planned for Eisenhower is Spanish on a court, other than that?
Other than that, that's it. The room is, the school is filled.
Right. So, are you adding the additional?
Right. We could look at it, and we don't know exactly, again, our kindergarten population, this hasn't been filled yet, so we don't exactly know what the numbers are, because we don't know.
I'm trying to remember our last PTO meeting. It was pretty, it was pretty high.
Twenty something. Well, the only other option to discuss is adding on Eisenhower, and if we're gonna build something, wait till I'm up to it. The second is, the other option is going to Slover and refurbishing Slover to try to make that a neighborhood now. Either one of those options, $752,000.
Is there a real perishing Slover off the table? Don't they have asbestos or like?
Well, it has to be updated, that's what we're saying. We don't know. Allison, you probably know more than we do.
Then you, the UES does not have empty classrooms?
The problem, the problem with the UES, Allison, and we've talked about this honestly, is that you gotta split. You can't put the whole third grade in there. You can't give your own capacity at the UES. You're talking a building that basically is, has a capacity by code, I believe it's 1250. You put three grade levels in there, it's 450 a grade level. You're way over. Plus, you got the preschool in there. Even if you took the preschool out, you'd be all the capacity. So, you're taking the problem from the elementary schools and you're moving it into a new building. We don't have that kind of capacity in that building. So, it was, or there was other talk about possibly splitting the third grade and taking effort of the third graders and bring them to Slove, to Samso. And we really didn't want to do that. Don't get me in trouble. I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't want to, you know, honestly do that. I don't think that's good, because I could say to your child, I'm taking him out, and he goes to second grade, and then I'm moving him to the ESUES. And we don't really want to do that. I don't think that's fair.
But I mean, I'm just surprised, because I, you know, I really thought that the demographic survey was something that was an.
Honestly, we did it, and I'm gonna be honest with you, we did a demographic survey call when I first came in. It wasn't that great. They predicted enrollments that were not even close.
6,500.
Yeah, they, they said that if we went by that demographic study, we would have 6,500 kids in this building five years ago, in this town. And we, and we're still at 50.
It's taken 20 years for all those.
But you see what I'm saying? That, and I understand what you're saying. We, I think a lot of ways is we're gonna really take a look at this, and we are. We're not just, you know, burying ahead in the sand. And I'll take a look at all of it. I'll say to Mr. Byrne, he's not in right now, he's on vacation, you know, do you have an extra classroom? But at the same time, when you do that, you know, you're also displacing children, and it becomes.
And what about the extra help as a classroom? At what point do you get an extra aid or?
For kindergarten, there's a law for kindergarten only. First, second, and third grade, you can have as many children as you want.
But then being responsible board members and administration, what is your threshold?
Well, my threshold would be where it's been, you know. You don't want to, I mean, the little guys, you really don't want to go over 25. You try not to.
So, I'm worried that.
But I'm saying, Allison, I understand what you're saying, but it's also a budget. If I put two people in a class, then I can't hire another teacher. We tried to do that. We're stretching it out. I can't put five new teachers in Eisenhower.
You know, trying, you know, I'm trying to fight for, for best for my kids.
God bless you. I'm not, but I'm also what? I'm looking globally, you know, where every principal comes to me, including Ms. Duffy, says, I need a teacher. If I went to every principal and vice principal, everyone says the same thing, I need a teacher and supervisor. So, I'd be hiring 25 people.
But yeah, but I mean, we can give you, you know, if you look at just numbers, you know, Eisenhower.
I've got news for you. At the middle school, you've got certain areas like science and social studies that are exploding at it seems. The middle school people have a lot of people in those areas. I believe, and Samso, same thing. Science and social studies are very high. I would say they're probably 27, 28, 29. I could be wrong, but I know those, because those kids don't get pulled out. I know from when I did the master schedule, unfortunately.
If they don't get the foundation in the elementary.
I, Allison, I agree with you.
All right, so that was my first thing. The second, what happened with the solar? Was that, did the state ever come back and say anything?
No, they did not.
We talked about that.
Allison, you know more about it than we do. We're waiting all along. Well, the problem is, again, Mr. DeAndrea is gonna say the same thing. The state is dragging their feet, and they're not giving us any direction, and we're on hold.
We did get a proposal from the county to join in with them for solar. However, we were originally gonna purchase it. This would be.
How will purchase it?
We wouldn't own the equipment, but it wouldn't cost us any money either, so we're looking into that now instead, because it does not appear that the state, the new governor. That proposal we had was in the Porzine era, and the money is not being released, so we're not optimistic. And at this point, our financial analysis is probably not very good anymore, so we're looking into joining in with the county.
Love to do solar. You know where all the solar panels are gonna go? It'll be in your backyard.
I love solar. I love when I see all the solar panels.
And that's what we were talking about. We even, Mr. DeAndrea even wanted to make a parking lot of solar.
You know, the value of the escherys are down.
Yeah, so even that proposal might not even be valid.
We've kind of, unfortunately, we sort of missed the boat. We're maybe a year late.
Yeah, because if it would've gotten smooth roofs, that would've been.
That's what we tried to do, but we probably about a year too late.
But with the county, we will not be able to buy any, we'll have to put it on good roofs or fields.
Right. Well.
We're looking at that, Seth.
Yeah, but the Eisenhower, you've got the slopes, too. They're facing, and, you know, been sitting there for four years.
Did you hear anything back, Mr. DeAndrea from the county? Have you gotten any?
Nothing at all.
And can you tell me with the acronym AAR, you said it's one?
Excuse me?
The AAR, or the Seals Funding?
Error.
What's it?
American Investor Republic.
So, is that the Obama?
That's the Obama stimulus. And that's going bye-bye. We're done. This is it.
So, there was no, because I'm just wondering, why did the preschool get a playground? Like, what, you know, like what makes you determination, okay, we need a playground at all these places? Why the playground over somebody else?
Ms. Duffy.
There are allocations for different age groups, if you will. So, there's money for preschool, and there's money for K through 12, and they go into different pots. And there, there is no play equipment at the preschool, and frankly, in terms of what's developmentally appropriate, that's very developmentally appropriate for, you know, the three to five age group, so.
Dr. DeAndrea, what's happening at Eisenhower?
I'm sorry?
We would like to have a playground at Eisenhower. I know Eisenhower and I know Truman doesn't have, I know it's very old at, I don't really have the authority.
That's actually required.
Yeah, that's not ours.
Right, and you know, the, our funds are limited to use for students with disabilities, so, you know, there are all sorts of.
Why, you know?
Yeah, there are all sorts of restrictions on how you can spend that money.
And then the teachers' board office. Was that in the budget that passed, the middle school?
Yes.
So, is that moving forward?
Yes.
So, will that be up for September?
That's the plan.
Well, I think what's gonna happen, Allison.
The plan is to start it in September, and then really, it'll be, will be completely active probably by the middle of the year, because you gotta give us some time to get it to work.
So, January?
I'm thinking that after the second marking period, we want to make sure that we know what we're doing before we start it. The last thing you want to do is open this up to the public.
Right.
And it doesn't work. Matter of fact, we just kicked her out. The coordinator of this, it's a big undertaking, and we're gonna do it. It's gonna be up. You gotta help us. You gotta help us.
Yes, it's all helping.
Yes. No, it's great. It'll, we're really looking forward to doing it.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, guys, sir.
Gordon Hill coming in. I'd like to know why Sarah only received 700, I believe, in $40,000.
750.
750, yeah.
750.
You took in the state aid?
Yes.
Good question.
When I pick up the newspaper and I see Oldbridge and all the other schools receiving a lot more than we know.
Midia, what was?
There's a certain formula of the state.
I did not see any direction as to how they allocated the funds.
Well, they said it was a formula, a percentage of your budget.
I mean.
Kurt Thambly got 26 million, didn't he? Something 29.
Kurt Thambly got 39.
39?
There's added business, so they anticipate them getting that.
I think there were several factors that went into how they distributed. Keep in mind that this past year, we were one of the few districts that did get increased state aid something. So, they looked at the formula. They looked at cuts in the past. There were several factors that went into how they distributed the money. There is no one way to say, look at this area, and that's right. We have additional security aid. Someone else got additional equalization aid. So, there is no direct link as to who got what.
And it's not just a flat 750. It's split up among other, it's not just, it's different areas, right?
No.
It's just one, but they calculated based on different areas.
That's what I'm saying. They looked at everything and determined where it was in one area.
And they give you one lump sum, but it's based on.
We got aid in one area. Other districts got aid in more.
Well, apparently, they had to have it, I think, by four o'clock today to tell the DCA Department of Community Affairs how you're gonna spend this money.
We met at time, right?
Do they, but do they have to approve if they say, okay, we don't want you to use it for the infrastructure, what we intend, you know, what you intend to do? Could they come back and say, I'm not gonna give you the money?
At this point in time, and this is a lengthy discussion we had last night, there is only clear direction on one and one item only. If you wish to use it for tax relief for the 10, sorry, 11, 12 school year. That was the only thing that there is clear direction on. There were three other options. All three of the other options are non-binding at this point in time, because they're waiting for clarification as to what can the board use the money for, or not use the money for, or reserve it for tax relief 12, 13. And there was an option four to reserve for 13, 14, which I couldn't even fathom. Well, someone like Kurt Thambly, who's got 39 million, might say, hey, we can push off so much. But there was only direction on one thing, and that's if you wanted to use it for tax relief 11, 12.
Well, I have, believe it or not, coming from me, and you know how stickler I am about budgets, money, and everything else, I mean, I criticize the council, or the, if I see any misappropriation of funds, even the board of ed. I'm happy to see that you're putting it towards the infrastructure, which I believe in the long run might save us money down the road, because who knows how many millions more that we would have to pay for new roofs or whatever. And the public did approve the budget, and I must admit, for the first time in a long, long time, your increase in education's a lot less, correct me if I'm wrong, than the council, than the boroughs. Am I right?
You're right.
So, looking at both factions there, I just hope that the DCA does approve what you intend to spend it for. Anyway, that's my comment. The other thing is personnel. I see the hiring of teachers and openings and whatever. And a couple of people commented to me, is Sarah's positions that are open online to know that there is an opening that they can apply? They have children that have need jobs, out of college, whatever. Some are out of college for two years and can't seem to get a job. And it seems like, and this is one comment that was made, sent to me by a resident, maybe they should put up a sign in the UO office, Sarah's residents need not apply. And that's how they felt that there was just, they were, there was no openings for Sarah's residents, and how they were treated with their applications and all. And Doctor Althano, I have to tell you this. One person told me this in the beauty parlor, or certified, that your staff or anyone there in the Slover School are rude. They're not courteous. They do not take the application. They never know where their application is. They never get a call back. Fine, we looked at your application. There is no follow-up whatsoever. Now, this isn't one person. This is three individuals that told me that. And I was appalled when they first told me, because my tax dollars pay their salaries. I think they should be courteous to all applicants in town, not from town or whatever.
Barbara, I couldn't agree with you more. If that's happening, give me their names, and I'll be glad to call them.
Well, I don't need this person, no, I'll, if I find.
Barbara, you can give me their name, and I have no problem going after, going after, if my staff is being rude to people, I won't tolerate it. And in all due respect, I don't care how busy we are.
This one was a male individual. He changed, I guess, his career and wanted to apply.
Substitute application.
Right, and whatever. And the thing is, is like, to get your foot in the door at Sarah, you have to be a substitute, possibly, to even.
Well, if he's a chemistry teacher, you probably don't, but the bottom line is, is that, you know, we do, you asked the question, are we online? Yes. If you go onto the website, we do have a section, right, Sandy, that basically we try to keep up to date, that has all the openings. If people are being rude, Barbara, I don't tolerate it. And in all due respect, I, I'm never rude to anybody. If somebody asks me, I make sure I answer their question, you know. Sometimes I can't hear.
But is there a follow-up? If I have an application, I come to your office, and I drop it, and she takes it and just throws it on a pile, and I don't hear from them? How, I mean, I don't need, it really don't, you look at it.
But sometimes when you come in, and again, I don't know what the application is for, or let's say it's a substitute application. There, you know, obviously, there are certain things that people have to do in order to get certified. And if they don't do it, the application will sit in a drawer forever until they process what they need to do. We don't, we don't tell people, hey, look, we have 700 people that come in that want to be substitutes. 700. I have one person doing that.
But many positions that you have hired, and I have read it over the course of the years, in, in the minutes, it's pending certification. They got hired, but it's pending certification.
I hear what you're saying. I hear what you're saying, but that's different. That's when we ask them to hand in stuff, whether it be, that's even before that. That they fill out the application. They have to get us some paperwork. They have to give us a whole bunch of stuff. And again, if it's a substitute.
Well, I know. One of my neighbors, I mean, they never, they were looking to get the certification, and they filled out the application, apparently, come back to the state. I mean, the person just got tenure in East Brunswick. They love her. And she had brick wall. And she, she graduated summa cum laude from Kane. She would've been an asset. No, it was East Brunswick's. So, these are the things that I'm looking at, and I want Sarah to succeed.
I agree. I agree. And I'm not, Barbara, all things being equal.
Gives me my property values and everything else.
All things being equal, I have to be honest with you, we'll hire a savable person just as quick as we hire anybody else. If people are telling you that we're not hiring savable people, I got some people saying we're hiring too many savable people. Okay, so, I hear you. I mean, all things being, look, I came from an environment where I grew up, you hire your own. But all things being equal, you hire your own, and that's my philosophy, you know, savable kids, if everything being equal, you know. And like Mike said, I'm not hiring, you know, somebody to, you know, do menial job. I'm hiring somebody to teach.
Well, if the person is qualified.
And I agree with you. Barbara, I'm not disagreeing.